Good morning and welcome to the October the ninth Henry County Commissioners Meeting. I'd like for you all to please stand and join us for a pledge of allegiance followed by a short prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here on this beautiful day. Please watch over us and guide us in our decision-making process. Please be with the families of those that we have lost. Please watch over those in the south part of the United States and especially in the Florida area as they prepare for Hurricane Milton. And those that are survived the hurricane Helene. In your name we pray, amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a report in the treasurer's office, the monthly report for August. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a report on the Innovative Technical Solutions monthly report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have before us five food and beverage claims. The first claim is for the Historic Shelter House at Memorial Park affidavit number twenty sixteen dash eighty-two for two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Making motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We also have a Historic Shelter House affidavit number twenty sixteen dash eighty-three for fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for MRS heating and cooling.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a third Historic Shelter House affidavit number twenty sixteen dash eighty-four for twenty thousand, two hundred dollars to custom electrical services. Is there a motion?
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We also have a food and beverage claim for Beautify Knightstown affidavit number twenty sixteen dash eighty-five for thirty dollars for designs and graphics.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. The fifth and final food and beverage claim is for EDC affidavit number twenty sixteen dash eighty-six for seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents for Amazon.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We now have an update from the EDC. Okay, thank you. Do we have a chamber update? We do have Josh Estle with us today. Welcome, Josh.
Uh, two things today. Um, we just need to finalize the retiree renewal with Humana. Minimal change in pricing for fourteen to four thirty-two a month for the advantage plan. You guys already had that. I know we just need to execute the signature for January one. Um, I've got paperwork if you don't have a copy of it. Uh, any questions on that at all? Same benefits, everything?
Just the, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And then we have a proposal for coverage for the two new drones that the sheriff's department, um, purchased. Um, the carriers' global aerospace insurance, um, as we've discussed and you probably can figure, um, watercraft, aircraft are excluded basically in every policy. Those need to have specialty policies and that includes drones. Um, so we got this proposal a couple of weeks ago. It looks good. Um, the bigger drone, the value's six thousand. Um, the smaller drone, the, the value's about a thousand dollars. We have a quote for both a million and five million and, uh, on, from a liability standpoint. And it is, it's fifteen hundred and fifty-four dollars for one million. And it's about thirty-two hundred dollars for the five million, which is the limit that we have on, uh, other liability coverages. There is some, um, reason for that. You know, the torque cap in Indiana, seven hundred thousand per person, five million per claim. So if we wanted to buy coverage up to that torque cap like we do on other coverages, the five million, it's about thirty-two hundred dollars a year. Uh, and that includes the physical damage coverage to the drone plus the, the liability.
I know Josh and I have been working together on this, so I have reviewed it. I believe you guys all had a copy of it. It seems pretty standard, um, for the policy. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The drone. It's the, it's.
You want to do the five million for the thirty-two gap?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's the thirty-two hundred, right?
Yeah. Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
That's it for me. Unless you have other questions.
Nope.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Next, we'll go to the department reports. I don't see Angela.
She's over here.
Hello, Angela. Angela Cox from the Henry County Health Department. Thank you.
I believe at the last meeting, um, you had tasked me with putting together a committee to review, um, proposals for the opioid settlement funds. And before you, what I gave is just a brief bio of the individuals that, um, I would like to put together along with myself um, on this, uh, committee. Uh, and the first one that you'll see, um, is Ms. Mandy Norman. And I'm just going to read just a little bit so that the public has an idea of who this individual is. Um, she has an associate degree in accounting and a bachelor's and a master's degree in business administration, um, which I was seeking to have someone with that business backgrounds because there are several business plans that I believe will encounter as we have previously. Um, and then she, uh, in her life, personal testimony-wise, another reason, um, that I picked this young lady is that she's experienced, um, a great deal of loss due to drugs, alcohol, violence, and suicide in her family. Um, and has really lived and come out extremely resilient from a really hard situation. And so I think she brings that passion and compassion to the board. Um, she has, uh, originally grew up in Randolph County, but has been here for many years, raised her three girls here, uh, and continues to live in the, in Henry County. And then, uh, Steve Nelson, um, I think everybody in the community is pretty familiar with Steve. Um, Steve actually reached out to me after he read the article in the paper. And I really couldn't think of a better person from a mental health standpoint, um, to have on our committee with all of his years of experience. Um, he, he's been, I don't know if anybody remembers the Dunn Center when our mental health programs years ago was that. He was there on the ground floor of that and, uh, retired from Henry Community Health, in particular, um, working with children. And so he currently sits on the, uh, county corrections board. So he's got, uh, insight from that standpoint. And then the last person, um, Jason Craig, and I think many of you have met Jason from, in, in previous meetings, but he's a certified prevention specialist associate. He has a bachelor's degree in psychology and addiction and recovery. Um, he's currently the director of the Indiana Suicide Prevention Network. And he leads statewide initiatives to raise awareness and advocate for comprehensive suicide prevention strategies. Um, and prior to that role and how I met Jason is that he served as the regional prevention coordinator for the Indiana Division of Mental Health and Addictions. And he was, oh, he had that position for four years, so we worked with him for a good little bit, especially right through COVID. But, um, he was, uh, effectively overseeing eleven counties in east central Indiana. And he brought a lot of resources and training to Henry County and helped us, uh, develop our client coordinating council. And until that, um, funding kind of dried up. And then so when that did, they disbanded those regional directors. And Jason actually, um, felt so drawn that he and his wife have moved to Newcastle.
Really?
And so they are now Henry County residents. Um, and he's just very, very excited. So I have someone who has a lot of resources and connections with the Department of Mental Health. So I think we can get things vetted and we'll be on top of, um, grants and different things that'll come in because he still has those connections. We have that person with that business background when the rest of us are going, I'm not real sure what a business plan exactly needs to entail. And then we'll have Steve Nelson from that point. And then I can hopefully be that person that's just putting, like I do with a lot of other things, just bringing the whole ball together, um, to do that. We will, if you're okay with these individuals and give me your blessing about that, I will, um, get with them. And what we're, would, would like to do is to put up a, not necessarily a request for proposal that you think of for a grant, but just some guidelines as to, um, how to present your project, what we need to see in the project. Um, and hopefully a lot of that'll come in ready to go so that we can move through the proposed projects more quickly and get you a better, um, idea when, when they're ready to bring it to you as to your decision on it.
I think this is a, a great, um, array of, uh, diversity in, in this group. Unless anybody else had any questions, comments, or concerns. Um, I'll make a motion to approve all three of them.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work, Angela.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a department report from the coroner's office? Thank you. The highway department? Okay, thank you. Surveyor?
Not here.
Not present.
Tom's not here.
Do we have a department report from the sheriff's department? Thank you, sir. Auditor's office? Burke's office? Memorial Park? Welcome, Rita.
Hey, there's not much to report on the shelter house. They've got all the windows in, all of the doors, and they're cleaning it up. Next week is, I think it's next week, is the, uh, rededication of it on Saturday from nine to twelve.
I think that's right, the nineteenth from nine to twelve.
Yeah. On the pond, uh, they have hauled out seven hundred and eighty-three loads of, I want to say dirt, but it's not, well, it's.
Mud, mud.
Dunk. So far, and, um, they're saying that it's about, at the end of the week, it'll be about half done. They missed three days because of rain and they worked Saturday to try to make up for it. And we're waiting on a guy from Ranger Line with, for the overflow gate. Uh, see if we can repair it or how much one would cost. It's about ninety years old, so we can't buy any replacement parts or anything. And, uh, there has been a, we had talked about making a pier for handicap people so they could fish off the pier. And they've got a contact for that, but I haven't heard anything if they've talked to them yet or not. Uh, they're going to start on the lagoon today and they build a ramp so they can offload or load the trucks from there. And, um, let's see. Okay, there's going to be, on the south side, they're going to make a green space along through there. Uh, along the edge of the lake, bigger than it was, and build the banks up. And we're going to leave the, one of the power, uh, poles up there so we can have electricity for the pond. Uh, yeah, fountain. And I think that's it. You guys got any questions?
No, I've gone out there a few times and sat and watched them do it. It's kind of, won't say fascinating, it's more mesmerizing to see them, how they're doing it, you know, getting in the middle. But yeah, they're, they're doing, they're doing a lot.
Yep, there's so much stuff in there, a lot more than I, I thought, so.
Yeah, and I think most people thought it was going to be like, um, solid, a more solid form, but when you see the videos of it coming out of the truck, it's just this slimy, thick mud, gunk. I don't know even how to describe it, sludge.
Yeah.
Thickness, you know, so it'll be, it'll be nice once it's done.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Do you have anything from Brian Truitt? You have a companion with you today. Welcome Deputy Director, Misty. Next is the Henry County Emergency Management, Mandy.
Morning. I have two things to go through today. I think if you guys got your emails with the Stryker contract, this is going to go up by six percent if we don't lock it in before November first. And with this being your only meeting, I kind of just threw it together. I did send it to you. I apologize. Hopefully you viewed it. It's pretty, it's pretty standard. Um, I do have grants out to pay for this equipment, but, you know, those come in, who knows when? You don't know if you're going to get them. You might get them. Anything we get in, we'll go towards it, but it is an affordable payment. Instead of five, they made it seven for us and they also made the first payment not due until April. So it gives us plenty of time to get ahead of it. And I just asked for it to be spaced out because we always have a payment for an ambulance in January and then in June, July is those insurances. So it's like anywhere in those other places where there's not a payment, if we could move it. So they agreed to defer it to us. If we don't lock it in now, it's, it's seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars more after November first, so it's kind of.
What the Stryker contract is. Can you explain what the?
So the Stryker contract is ALS equipment, which we have to have to move forward. Um, it's the last step. And, uh, it's a cot for ambulance one, which is our, will be our twenty-four seven ALS ambulance. It's also two LifePack monitors, um, and all the equipment, it's kind of all put together. Plus the, um, equipment to take care of it for the whole time that we own it. And that also means that if something breaks or, you know, they replace it, they, there were, Stryker's really good. Within twenty-four hours, if we call for a problem, they're there fixing it. They come to us, they'll pull anything out. We've done it a few times with six and eight because they have Stryker equipment and they're just awesome people and we work with Zach. And so it includes the equipment, the insurance on the equipment, the service contract over seven years. And I'm just asking if it's okay to go ahead and have them get started on that. It doesn't, like I said, none of it, we don't do anything as far as payments or anything until April. But we're going to, it goes up November first like all equipment does. They have a deadline. It was supposed to be October first and I couldn't get everything done in time, so they gave us four extra weeks. So this is probably as far as I can go before it's going to cost us almost twenty thousand dollars more to get the very same equipment. So.
Anybody have any question? Um, I'll make the motion to approve. And it's seven, across seven.
It's across seven years, starting in April twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I guess the only question I do have is that increase that was going to go in, if you lock it in now, you don't have that.
Nope, no, any, yeah, I lock it in now, this is in concrete. That's it.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. And the other thing I have is kind of county business. Um, I emailed you a notice, uh, to bidders that I need to put in the paper. Um, I think you guys probably reviewed it. It's pretty standard to what it was last year except for, uh, in the contract itself. And notice the specifications are going to have the things that they said they needed that we didn't know last year to get it set up exactly the way that we need it. Um, so there is an extra page on there that is specifically states how we need it set up. They asked for it to be in writing, so this puts it in writing. Um, and all I need right now is the, the okay to, um, place the notice of bidders, which will allow people to start bidding until November first. And then your meeting, your very next meeting in November, um, will be when you, we open bids, um, and you approve it. And then basically sign a contract with whoever you accept. It's just starting the process a lot sooner. And I did meet with Tommy this morning and we're setting codes up, um, specifically easy to track. Um, because we have a new system now, no more key fobs, everyone has a code, so they've been really great to work with. Um, I feel comfortable going into it, but it's going to be a lot simpler this year. Fingers crossed.
I'll make the motion to put the notice out to bidders for fuel for twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
And that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
You're welcome.
None of the rest of them are here, I don't believe.
I think we've gone through all the departments. So next we'll move to the quotes and proposals that we have received. The first one is for two hundred South Twelfth Street Duke Energy Small Business Energy Saver Proposal.
I guess I need a little bit more information because this was sent to Glenn Van and Glenn's not been here for a year. Uh, I need to get some more information on this program and what it entails. I know it says that we can, there's an incentive to save money, but I think we have to pay for stuff upfront. So I'm going to make a motion to table this until we can get some additional information on the program.
There is no one here from Duke Energy today, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So did they reach out to you, Joe?
Because that was kind of the. The only thing they reached out was with the copy of the email that you see here that was addressed to Glenn Van. And Glenn had it apparently made, had reached out to them about changing some of our lighting to more energy-saving lightings. Um, but that's all I have, so we will need to
Yeah.
make more considered effort to, for them to come, come and contact us about this. Motion's been made to table this.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and ta, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have a Justice Center SAS proposal number two four four two two for seven hundred dollars. We have Jeff Lutz.
This is to put the security camera in the new?
Yeah, this first quote was for, uh, the addition of a security camera in what's now the new environmental office was the old DMA office. It'll be basically interior facing the, the door off of, let's see, is that twelfth street? Facing west. That price includes the camera, the license, and the setup on the server.
Well, it's something we need. Um, I said it's something we need, um, before I make a motion. Steve, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm on camera enough. I don't need to. That's okay.
What was that?
He said he's on camera enough.
Oh, right.
I'll make a motion to approve the camera for the new environmental office.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Uh, the second quote that I had requested is for the addition of a smartnet contract on the two new firewalls, which we have to have for installation purposes. The, what I, Brian and I had went through and we had included on this quote, all of the core items that's in the Justice Center. What this contract will provide. Software support, any updates, as well as a replacement cost. Or Monday through Friday, eight to five replacement if a particular device were to go down. And this covers through September thirtieth of twenty-six.
So this is basically a two-year contract and it gets all of the network devices on the same rotation?
Correct.
And provides, and when he says Monday through Friday, he means next day? If something, if something goes down, they'll have the new equipment here the next day?
Cisco provides that hardware and support. Now this will come up for renewal again. October first of twenty-six, so this is not a perpetual forever license or support.
On renewal, will the price be adjusted or will we lock it in for the two-year that you were talking about?
This price covers through September thirtieth of twenty-six.
Okay.
After that, we'll just have to re-quote it. And the total cost of all of those items was eleven, one eighty-eight, twenty-nine.
And these pieces of equipment are pretty vital to the, uh, operation of the entire county.
Um, there, if you, if you picture a wagon wheel, there's a hub. So if any of these devices go down, every, every building or any building.
Will be down.
Any office is dead. So we're trying to get that redundancy put in place that we've never had before.
Do we have funds to cover this?
Yes.
Jeff's piggy bank?
Pardon?
Coming out of your piggy bank?
No, the answer is yes, and it's listed on our additional appropriation to go in front of the council.
Yeah. Give me a budget and I'll take it out of there.
So that's why I said yes, because it's on the additional appropriation list? I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, this is contention upon council approving our additional appropriation.
Understood.
Thank you. Next we have quotes for the Henry County Sheriff's Office. We have the sheriff present. The first quote is from Swollen Excavating. It's for bid price for labor and materials to do work listed below. Requires stripped vegetation vegetation off the building pad compact number fifty-three stone for forty-eight by fifty-four building pad, four inches below asphalt grade and hold dirt in to back up the stone on building, gray dirt around building. One quote is from Swollen Excavating for thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And then we have a second quote from Klaus Concrete Construction to do the same work for twenty-six thousand one hundred.
Commissioner, do you want me to give a brief description of what this is?
Yeah, cause I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm confused all of a sudden here. Cause you've got, I've got three quotes here for a different sized building. And we approved the building that we put money down on. So where's that at? I mean, what'd we do there?
Well, to, to my knowledge, and I've had conversation with uh, Commissioner Wiley about it, um, that's like a metal carport. And, and um, you know, this storage building, we, we have to store uh, records in it. Um, and it, it needs to be uh, climate controlled and um, those metal carports um, are if you have any experience in, in the construction side of it, I mean, they, there's really no way to insulate them. They will drip water. Um, you know, condensate. Uh, so I, I, I wasn't involved in any of those, so I can't speak to what, what that uh, what that is. So the, what we have at hand today, the two quotes are for where the building goes. Um, just simply stripping the vegetation, building up compacted stone to get to basically a footer ready or building ready site. Um, so those two quotes are, are for the same items. Um, and then, then we have a quote also from the architect for uh, the, the design fees and, and um, uh, submitting that to the state, so.
No, it's like, cause the pad says forty-eight by fifty-four, but the building is forty by sixty. Is so your pad's not gonna be as big as your building is what I'm, I guess I'm concerned with.
Well, I, like I said, I, I haven't, um, I don't know the, the building, I don't know what was figured in the past. We have a specific area that it, that it, where it needs to fit. And so that area, I'm just going off of actual dimensions of the forty-eight by fifty-six. Um, I'm going off of, of the area that we have to work with. So like I said, I'm not sure on that. Was that fifth?
Uh, this is the one from your architect is what I'm talking about. It says forty to sixty commercial pole barn. But your pad says you're doing a
Yeah, yeah.
Forty-eight by fifty-four, so I guess.
Well, I'll tell you where that might have came in at. Um, he, he drew, he designed the building right over here. Is that a forty by sixty?
I think so, yeah.
That might be a cut and paste area.
Okay. It's like, that's what I, that's why I was curious. It's cause your pad doesn't match your building.
Uh, I'm sorry, that uh, I would think of uh, that size, but I don't think it'd be good there. I'm sure he'll design smaller for the same price.
Well, yeah, I bet he would. If he's gonna design smaller, I would like to think he'd do it a little cheaper, but. And do you know where the permit process is at at this point? Cause that was the holdup on the getting the other building put up with all this time is, cause that was supposed to been done before the jail was ever completed. Because we originally, we approved it because they needed to store construction material in. And the holdup came from the state about permitting and I, and that was where last I heard it had stopped. So are we still in a problem with getting permitting?
Well, that, that's what the, there needs to be a uh, a stamped design to get to the state. I don't, I don't think that ever occurred. So I, I can't speak for before, but to my knowledge that, that never occurred. So being it's a public access building, it has to have uh, you know, stamp design drawings.
It has to have a state design release?
Through the Department of Homeland Security. So that um, it won't, it shouldn't take very long uh, to get that. I know that we can get foundation uh, releases overnight. Actually overnight, funny enough, but um, to get the, you know, a, a full designer lease through once it's submitted to the state, um, six to eight weeks. So that's um.
It's like, cause I'm thinking we've been waiting for two years to get this building put up, so.
Yeah, correct, correct. So and this is the, this is, is the start, uh, is, this is the ground zero starting point. So I, I don't know. You know, I don't know anything previous to this is where we have to start from. So, yeah. And, and also just on that note, uh, we can do site work uh, to get the site prepared, which is those two quotes for um, while we're waiting on, on this state, the state designer lease. So it's, we can get movement, at least get, get the site ready. Um, and of course, while we're waiting on the design release, um, we will, we'll have the design done and then we'll be getting precise quotes on, on that specific design. So it's kind of a process that will um, flow together, I guess, but this is the starting point.
I guess the only other question I got with that is can we, just like you've got pouring concrete, don't we have to have a permit for that?
Yes, yes. I don't, I don't, there's no pouring concrete in getting the site.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that that's okay.
Yes, correct. Yep.
So, and I'm not against this, so please, please take that. But since we haven't been a part of the discussion uh, and we have to approve all these things, what I would like to do is have a work session to sit down and see what, cause based upon these, I don't know what this looks like. Um, I would like to have a work session so we can sit down and discuss everything about this before we approve anything. Um, just so that we have all the information that we need. Um, and again, not against building this building, but.
The building should have already been built, but.
Well, I know.
Yeah, so, and, and that's fine, but just, I do wanna comment on that. So um, we're not gonna be able to have a, 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 a real educated work session uh, without having the precise design uh, done because that is what we'll use to um, you know, to price.
Well, I guess us sitting down with you and whoever and laying out what the thoughts are, that can at least get us, you know, um, a visual, I'm a visual person. So um, I would like to go that route. Any thoughts from anybody else?
Ha- have you had a chance to reach out to the people who put the down payment on? Are they gonna refund that or?
Well, and so I, I've, I've talked to Commissioner Wiley a few times and I guess kind of my understanding was that, that he was gonna liaison do that. So I don't know, we, we've had some communication.
When I spoke with them and got the information from them as far as what type of building they were going to construct for what was proposed, they ended, for instance, they indicated that it did have insulation and then I asked them about it and I had previously years before I visited with those folks and I knew the insulation they were talking about was a very thin layer of material that's referred to as insulation, but it doesn't, it doesn't insulate the building to the degree that Sheriff Sprouls was, was interested in a more traditional insulation that would have an R factor that would prevent the sweating of the building. So, and when I asked them about the down payment that the county had made, this, the answer I got was that they would consider refunding that. They did not say that they would refund it. They said that obviously they would have to check with their main office and, and go through that. But when I asked them the question, if we do not proceed and build the building that we had put a down payment on, what happens to the down payment? And I was, I was given an answer that wasn't one hundred percent one way or the other. That's the last I spoke with them because I didn't know what the sheriff was uh, finally intending to do. But what, the discussion that we'd had back uh, months ago was that if the sheriff was going to figure out what type of building that he was requesting, that he was going to need to do the, the work. And apparently this is what he has done to this point. So um, that's, that's what I know about it.
In regard to that down payment, Commissioner, do you remember, just, just so the public knows, uh, was it in, in the range of three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars or something?
I was thinking it was thirty-seven something.
Yeah, so it's in the, I just wanted people to know that it's one fifty thousand dollar down payment or something. Yeah, so it's, it's in the range of three thousand uh, mid-threes. Uh, one, one more comment though, um, in regards to what we're, we're looking at today. Um, no matter what type of, of building we use, we, we still need this exact same uh, type of, of uh, building prep work. So um, you know, discussing the, the, the different types of buildings, uh, it won't change the, the prep work and, and, and it won't change the need to have a uh, the architect. So with the items today, um, there's no, there's no loss in uh, moving forward with the items that are at hand today. Uh, so I just wanted to make that.
I think there's some questions and I, I know you were just conversing. Um, I think there's some questions that may need to be answered first. So I'm gonna make the motion to table this and have a work session so we can get all the I's dotted, T's crossed, ifs, ands, or buts worked out. Because what I don't wanna have happen is we move forward here and then all of a sudden we run into a, a problem. And, and again, I'm not, I'm not against this. I just, I don't think we have enough information.
Could, could we amend that to a point where if you still gotta send this architect thing in for your design release? Could we go ahead and approve that part so they can get the design release part and then table the rest of it?
I don't know what, I, I would like, I would feel better and I mean, I'm only one vote. I would feel better to have a little bit more information of what you're wanting to do with the building, even if it's hand, you know, us to sit down and discuss it. Um, to see what you're wanting to do. I'm not, and again, I'm not against it. I just need additional information before I approve anything, so.
Joel, I'm curious, what's your comment and thought?
Oh, I, the kind of dedication was we don't get the three thousand five hundred back. It does not stay on. We may have to replace that. What was another thought?
How quickly can you sit down with us?
I, I can sit down whenever.
We just have, we just have to have forty-eight hours public notice.
Yeah, you guys.
You're okay with that? Cause I think we need to expedite this.
Oh, sure. I just need to.
For two years now at least.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm, I'm around, so you guys pick the time. We'll, we'll be fine.
Okay.
With, with that, I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
And then we'll get with you because I said, we need to get this done.
Looking at my calendar. Just FYI, I'm available on the fifteenth, but I know you don't have your calendar with you, so. John, would you be available on the fifteenth that they are? Okay.
The fifteenth of October? At what time?
I, I don't. Anytime's fine with me, but I know Commissioner Gallagher doesn't have his calendar down here right now, so. Okay. We'll let Commissioner Gallagher review his calendar.
Tendively, well, I'll say let's go ahead. If I have to, I'll try to rearrange something.
Okay, she wants to say ten o'clock on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Ten AM on the fifteenth? Right here? For our work session
Yes.
With Sheriff Sprouls in regards to the storage building.
Joel, do you wanna be here? Okay. No, I don't think so. I just wanna make sure you don't think you need to be here. Okay. Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Ten AM.
Is that too early for you?
Moving on, we have new business. The Boobash on Broad Street.
So uh, Newcastle Main Street. Oh, there we go.
Welcome.
Sorry about my face. I had to proceed your Monday, so ignore that.
You look beautiful.
Um, so I am on the committee for Newcastle Main Street. Um, and Boobash is next Saturday, the fifth, or the nineteenth from two to five for trick or treating. We have thirty-four downtown businesses participating in that. Um, and then a dog parade at four PM right out here. Um, and then we are more of an adult costumes and cocktails from seven to ten with our downtown bar partners. Um, our ask today is if we can place in your lawn, this side of the courthouse, a sign that says Boobash twenty twenty-four, um, so that folks with their dogs and their kids in costumes can take photos.
I don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Thank you. Boobash on. The Recorder's Office, FIDLA.
Fidler.
Fidler Computer System and Software Licensing Agreement. And we have Lisa.
Hello. Um, I have made a decision after some research to switch my software provider from CSI to Fidler. Um, you have the proposal in front of you, I believe. And I have a representative up from Fidler here today, Greg Bachman, here to answer any questions you may have. But I'm just asking you to approve the contract. Joel has seen it and approved it.
And it's my understanding that this A is going to save you time and.
Eventually, yes. The first year is gonna cost us a little bit more because of setup fees, but after that, it will save us some, probably even pay for itself with public access fees.
Is there gonna be any issues transitioning or?
Possibly, but hopefully we've got all those, we've got a plan that, that's gonna go smoothly. Greg might be able to tell you a little bit more about that, but um, we're hoping that it will go smoothly.
Morning.
Morning.
It, it'll be smooth. We've worked with uh, forty-three counties already in Indiana and um, the data and the images will convert over just fine. And this is a complete refresh of the, the software and services that Lisa provides. So anything that she does, or they do in their office, receipting, scanning, indexing, all that stuff, along with the remote access side. So the title companies, banks, attorneys, um, that access will be part of this as well as electronic recording and all the new technological um, functionality coming down pipeline as well. So it includes all of that.
And the fees that they um, get for all the records through Doc Pop, um, they will be receiving a higher percentage of that than what they currently receive now. And that's what she was talking about, it'll pay for itself.
Potentially.
Potentially pay for itself.
And then I have, in, in the process of doing this, I didn't do this lightly. I researched this. I talked to a lot of attorneys and title. I talked to a lot of attorneys and title searchers and stuff and about our potential switch, and a lot of them are on board and really like this software better than the DocSpot software anyway, so many of our regular searchers are excited about it, so.
I know Lisa's been talking to me about, oh, gosh, you've been talking to me about this for.
Couple months.
Couple months now, so I don't have any further questions.
Do you have the money for this?
I do.
Yes, she does.
Good girl.
I'll make the motion to approve the recorder's contract for Fiddler's computer system and software agreement.
As long as I don't get any complaints when things hiccup, I'm okay with it, too.
No problem.
No problem as well.
I'm trying to think, have we had, have we ever had somebody call and say, hey, I couldn't get a document at the recorder's office?
Not yet, but this may start it. I didn't think I'd get complaints about mud being spilled on the road from the ponds, but that's been an ongoing thing now. So it's part of life, I guess. With that, I'll second your.
Motion's been made and seconded, hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Next, we have a information about a railroad company that's going to close Dublin Pike between four twenty-five east and four fifty east.
We have a representative here from the.
Here comes the railroad, welcome.
Thank you. How y'all doing today?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing fine, thanks.
So it's my understanding, that's the the Newcastle Southern Railroad, they're wanting to repair the crossing at Dublin Pike.
Yes, ma'am. And the crossing at I Street also.
I Street.
Which is right there by Neil's Scrapyard.
Okay, that's that's a city, so.
Oh, sorry.
But no, that's fine, you you wouldn't know that, they would have to approve that. When do you expect that you want to close Dublin Pike?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, and how long will it need to be closed?
Five days.
Five days. And Brayden, you're good with rerouting and doing all of, I know he's talked to you, correct?
Yeah.
And then, of course, we'll communicate with dispatch and everybody that needs to be.
Will will you communicate with dispatch, or will you communicate with Brayden, who will then just communicate with dispatch?
I I assume that I would communicate with Brayden, because I don't, I don't know anybody from dispatch.
I'll say, because Sheriff's Department's going to need to be where.
Yeah, because Brian can send out a Act of nine one one, letting everybody know volunteer fire departments, law enforcement, EMS.
And this is going to be done to county specifications as far as crossing, you're going to oversee to make sure that everything's put back and we're okay as far as road surface and everything, okay?
So what kind of timeframe, Brandon, would you want to have prior to closure, twenty-four, forty-eight? Do you have a preference, or do the commissioners have a preference?
You're okay with that, too?
Absolutely, yes. If I get the okay, I just got to make a phone call and he'll be here within, I'm going to say within a week, so. And I just spoke with one of his guys today about I, and he'd like to do I and Dublin Pike at the same time there, if that's possible, right there, to get his equipment and everything over here at one time, and then there is no moving equipment and all that. Yeah, that has to do with that also.
And he'll need to come to the border works meeting, is that right, Joel, for the city to get approval for that?
So I take it you have plans for the railroad then?
I'm sorry, sir?
I said, I take it, doing this, you have plans for the railroad then, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir, we do, that's, that's.
Free.
We'd like to bring some more business, I mean, if y'all can promote some rail service right there, that would be great also.
Absolutely, yep, it's it's, it it it's a good thing that these two crossings are being worked on, so with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
So I kind of just paused in my motion, but I'll just say this, with the forty-eight hours advanced, working with Brayden and and coordinating everything, so, all right? You're done.
That's all you got, that's all, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
The RDC Plan Amendment Summary. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jim Melikin, attorney with DeFer Varan and represent the Henry County Redevelopment Commission. We're here this morning to ask you, the commissioners, to adopt a resolution approving the planning commission's order that they entered September nineteenth, determining that the proposed expansion of the consolidated area, the creation of new allocation areas, and amendment to the plan conformed to the development plan for the county. This is an amendment to to what the RDC can do. We come before you every now and then when the plan needs, we feel needs to be amended. Most recently, that was in two thousand twelve. The world keeps turning, needs change, and our RDC and the Economic Development Corporation feel these amendments are necessary tools for us to have in our in our toolbox.
So this plan was presented to the planning commission at our last meeting, and it was the actual RDC plan, and it was approved at that meeting, so.
This doesn't change anything as far as, you know, like, sort of public information. No tax increase.
An amendment is is a process, it doesn't change anything like that.
Because I want the public to understand that that's.
It it takes a lot of steps to get this done, that's why we don't do it very often, but as needs change, we feel it's important for us to have these changes to be to be and remain competitive. It started with the RDC adopting a a resolution, and the next step was to take that before the planning commission, for them to determine that that, those amendments conformed to the plan in place with with the county. That was approved unanimously, I believe. The next step then is for the commissioners to approve what the planning commission did. If that happens today, notice of a public hearing will be published right away, and on October twenty-first, the RDC will conduct a public hearing right here to receive input regarding the amendments. In all likelihood, the, at that meeting, at the conclusion of the public hearing, the RDC will adopt an a confirmatory resolution that will then come back to to the, to you, the commissioners, on your meeting on the twenty-third, to to finally take action to adopt the proposed amendments.
And correct, Steve, with this plan, like the TIF.
Yeah.
If the TIF is put in, no taxes, nothing happens until development starts to occur.
And that's why I want to make sure the public understands that we're not passing an increase, so.
No, not at all, not at all. I was going to challenge Joe to read the entire resolution, because there's an awful lot of parcel numbers in there.
Penny can do that.
I second that.
All the. Joel, does he need to?
The resolution was tendered, do you, do you have it in front of you?
Yes.
Yes.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. The action of the plan commission on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four is hereby approved by the Board of Commissioners. The amending declaratory resolution and the original plan as amended are hereby approved. This resolution shall be effective from and after its passage, passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County this ninth day of October, twenty twenty-four.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three ayes and zero nays, signed by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have a specifications for a fuel bid for January twenty twenty-five to December of twenty twenty-five.
Mayday already took care of that under hers.
We we've already taken care of this. We have two resolutions, of which we just passed one, and the second resolution.
So this resolution is from ARA, this is the resolution approving order. Oh, wait, that's the wrong one, I'm looking at the wrong one. Resolution authorizing the application submission for the owner occupied grant that we were looking at with ARA. It it authorizes the submit of the CDBG owner occupied rehab grant application to the Indian Office of Community Rural Affairs and Addressing Related Matters, so they just need us to approve this resolution so they can move forward to the next step. And at what point do you want any of this read?
I think you need to read one and two, the only thing I noticed, number two, it it words written out that the inter-counties committed twenty-seven, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars, then you have.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that, and and what they did, I'll have her change that.
Is twenty-seven thousand?
Actually, it was, they approved up to fifty-seven thou, or fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand for food and beverage, having like to. So we can approve a contingent upon this change.
The commissioner's president authorized to prepare and submit an application for five hundred thousand grant funding for an owner occupied rehabilitation program and to execute and administer a result resulted grant, including requisite general administration and project management. Contracts and agreements pursuant to regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Henry County, Indiana hereby commits to requisite local funds in the amount up to fifty thousand dollars in the form of cash from the county's food and beverage fund for said program. Such commitment to be contingent upon receipt of owner occupied rehab funding from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, adopted by the Commissioners of Henry County on this ninth day of October, twenty twenty-four, eleven AM, and there is a motion.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I guess I should say contingent, we'll make that change, contingent upon making that change.
Contingent upon making the change.
I'll still second it.
Is anything else from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't let get you out of here on top, David.
I know. Safe trip.